Have to wonder why they're playing.
Somebody turned them in.
Doug, can you help me with this?
I'm not a psychologist.
Like to put the. There whatever should it be?
You just pin.
Okay, well, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, camera has twenty pounds. How many cameras we done, you know, man?
Okay, that's a good one.
Jeez.
Okay, everybody. Awesome. Welcome, everybody. This is the Southwick Select Board meeting for November third, two thousand and twenty five. It is six. P M. And we're in Land use hearing room at Town Hall and also remotely via Zoom and Channel fifteen. This open meeting is being recorded. If anyone else is recording, please advise Russ Anderson. Um, and let's. Go around the table.
Let's try.
I tried to introduce this to the. The United States. Into the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
If only.
Uh, is there anyone in the room for public comment?
Again, do introductions.
Excuse me?
Now we should introduce ourselves.
Then I'm.
I messed you up because I walked over there. It's all on me.
Okay. Let's start with introductions first.
Nicole Parker.
Thank you.
Doug Mogul.
Russ Anderson.
Okay, thank you. And Nadine is not with us tonight. Um, okay, public comments.
Yes, I approached one of the members of the Select Board so as not to violate the open meeting rule. My question was what happened to the ten thousand dollars the Finance Committee appropriated for the? Uh. You know, the uh aggregate utility opt-in opt-out situation. And I realized that no one has to answer me because this is a public comment. But I also remind you that you can choose to answer me.
Anything else?
No, I'm waiting for someone to answer me.
Have a seat. I'll answer you.
Thank you.
You may see, you may be seated. That uh ten thousand dollars that was talked about at the at the um. Community meeting for the aggregation, that was um. An amount appropriated. It was up to ten thousand dollars to colonial, I mean, uh to Beacon Integrated Services. Not to uh colonial power. It was a different firm. It was for consulting and putting together the applications to the state, the filings, shepherding those through. Um, and vetting the third-party suppliers and pricing. Um, it was up to ten thousand dollars, two thousand six hundred and forty, I believe, was the amount that was. Two thousand six hundred and forty dollars was the amount actually spent.
Thank you.
You want? Anybody else? Anybody online? Nothing. Okay. Hey, we can go into new business. And today we're going to discuss and possibly vote on any couple of policies and event policy first. No. And you wanna sure give us a preamble on that?
This came, I uh, you know, pillaged these from several other towns that have them. Um, asked my listserv and uh, you know, just kind of put it together. Just so the town is um aware of any events happening, whether or not we need to. Schedule more public safety or what, you know, whatever happened with whatever's happening in. You know, that would impact the town in any way, whether it's traffic or what have you um. That the town is alerted of it.
How do you?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna read the the purpose that she has um presented is the town of Southwick has established an event permit to provide a clear and uniform method for reviewing event applications. Ensure public safety and contribute to the sec- success of all events by providing a system of expectations for the applicants. So, so go ahead, Russ.
No, I was just wondering um. If there's any way of um putting a metric on what is an event is.
That was my my main concern too.
Uh, cuz you know, there's a lot of little things that. May not have impact, but then there's some big things we never hear about. So I didn't know if the other your listserv had any. Guidance on that at all.
Yeah, uh, you know, I I've asked that, of course, and they were very vague about it because the town wants the um authority to. Determine whether or not it requires going in front of the Select Board. Um, I think, again, I think anything that's affecting. Um, our public spaces or our traffic or uh any type of safety would require them to come to us.
Uh, would political statements or political demonstrations require this? Or I'm just thinking from election to things we've seen in the last year, you know?
Well, I think. I think they have, I think those types of events already have, you know, statutory rules around. Uh, yeah, and rights, I guess, for for that. Um.
For the.
I don't think we would, we we try not to touch anything political in nature unless a political town hall. Um. But I suppose if there's, if you know, they can gather, they can. Uh, I don't know. I. I think even just um if if somebody, if they're having a big demonstration to then. Even though it's a right, I would expect them to fill up an event permit application.
Right.
They're going to have an event in the town.
Right. My second question is the um. The insurance requirements?
Yeah.
Are we? On one hand, we do that, but on a parade permit, we ask for a waiver.
So we could put a waiver in here. It's it's highlighted for that, for you guys to have a conversation about it. If you wanna have it in there, what the amount should be. Um, this was the average. And uh, you know, also to put a waiver in, you could, we could add that in. And this is the one that I have here. I don't know which one you have, but I think I have. I edited this, but this. I took this entire paragraph out. The chief administrative officer may revoke or terminate this application. Uh, there's no way that I that would should be in there. Uh, that. That uh paragraph should be out cuz if you guys are going to approve a permit, I'm not going to revoke it.
On the insurance, I think it should just maybe contain a statement that says the Select Board may waive the insurance requirement. At its discretion.
So. Just trying to run through my head. Where what qualifies it? Um.
My my question on. Identifying what is an event that falls under this um. Use and or license of a public venue. And or a commercial or a private, depending on what it is.
Well, if I. Like if somebody's having a graduation party at their house and they're gonna be lined up along the entire street, both sides, no, we're not gonna ask for that. That's not our purview.
But if something is at the American Legion, like one call away. They're going to be at the American Legion for an all-day event. It may increase traffic. Is that something that this would be like notification and we would like make a determination? It doesn't need it?
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes, that's what I think.
They would make the application and we would say yes or no. We don't think this. I think we would need some uniform measure of that.
I, again, I I mean, I probably had twenty of these and none of them said more than twenty people, more than fifty people, more than.
No, we're talking about number of people, but for us to be uniform in. It it says a uniform expectation or whatever that wording was, we need to have a uniform method of evaluating those as well. They're all gonna be different theoretically. And and we don't want it to appear opinion.
No.
You know, that's of course what I'm saying, that what what would be our. Evaluation criteria. And and I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I I agree, but it's got some questions still for me.
Okay.
So like right now, we.
The Girl Scouts wanna do something down, you know, sometimes they use the. The downstairs or the. Four eight uses the downstairs. If they wanted to do some fair, they would need to do this. Permit cuz it's using town property.
Mm-hmm.
We would probably waive the requirement.
But this isn't two-town property, right? This is.
Well, as I'm saying, is it public? It says public.
Yeah. So what really stemmed this was when, to me, was when the Civic Fund was having fireworks. And I was the last to know. And so I, you know, I was like, there's some way the Select Board should know. What's happening and what what kind of impact we're going to have. So it was at our park, or the parking was at our park. But you know, so it's really just sort of just an acknowledgement of that we know that something's happening in town. That's all.
I don't disagree.
So I will certainly can um. I can, you know, go back and and edit it and.
I mean, what I mean, what are the questions or thoughts you guys have?
Not opinionated.
What it was and then clarity of how we would evaluate it.
So I I made my concerns directly back to Nicole at the time. When when I first read this, I I had very deep concerns on a First Amendment issue type. Basis in the first place, but then also the vagueness of it where. And I use the perfect example that you used is I read that that I would have needed an event permit cuz there's people parking cars on this. Public way in the town of Southwick where parking's allowed, but it would be denser than it normally would be. And. I would, I don't think I should, anyone should have to pull a permit to have at a party at their house as long as it's within. Whatever, but the way I read this and then the other part was the the requirement for the, you know, a significant insurance. Rider naming the town as as co-insured or um. What are named party additional insured, you know, it adds a burden to everybody for. Um. For frankly, no good reason in this, in the particular example I'm referring to, but I think that there's. There's probably a process improvement to let folks know. You know, and we also have events that are well-regulated today that are impactful on the town. But they would certainly qualify as an event under this, and it seems it would be dup- duplicative to do that. Motocross, right?
To us.
Yeah, they come to us and they tell us every year, by the way, we're bringing fifteen thousand people. We got a liquor license. We've got this. There's every officer.
And that's just that burden, like he should be, we should have it on file, really.
And, you know, and then we talked last week. I think we really should bring that back and carry that on the agenda and look at the local bylaw that we have for. Um, par- parades, processions, et cetera, to make sure we've got that right and tune that up so that. If we clean that up, that'll solve that aspect of things. Um, and then. For other events that might be. Yeah, absolutely. And other events that may be, may or may not be impactful. There might be a process. So somebody, if there, if someone is having an event, that's going to include Wally Park. They probably rented something from the park or got at least permission from P and R to hold that event there or something, maybe.
Or maybe, maybe.
But I don't know, but what when the um, you know, the schools have events at Wally Park all the time, they have a detail officer there all the time. I don't, as a Select Board member, need to know that necessarily. Their. High school sports, they're gonna draw a couple hundred people. And they've already taken a step to get a detail, for example, or what have you, but I don't want them pulling an event permit and having to charge the schools fifty bucks to have. Senior night at at Wally Park for a soccer game or a baseball game. So I, I think this is, this is. Scary grounds for me on the, and especially on the First Amendment. I know Suffield, our, you know, our neighbors to the south of here just went through this. Um, you know, they tried to do a permit to have an assemblage on their town common. Well. Uh, we've gone to war over smaller things than that. I don't wanna, I certainly don't wanna have that type of thing. If somebody wants to have. A gathering somewhere for a political purpose or what have you, that's their First Amendment right under the Constitution. And I don't wanna put paperwork up to put to get in the way of that because and tell somebody that they wanna have some kind of. Speaking event or protest event or what have you and. Have to put up a a multimillion-dollar insurance policy with the town as named insured. And believe me, I've been on the on both sides of those protests, right? So um. I I just don't think that's, I don't think we should be in the business of regulating. I agree with you. If if there's something. You know, if people are having things in Town Hall, we already have a process to book it and reserve it. And organizations that meet here, if we have insurance rules for that already, okay, we can fix those or change those. But as far as an event permit, um. I think we can figure out how to do it without having a necessarily a policy. And, you know, if we get into the roads, I think we already have a law on that. We should just tighten that up and make it correct to what it should be cuz I think I mentioned.
I didn't review that yet.
Yeah.
And I could have, sorry.
That's all right, but just should be, you know, if it if the word procession is in there, well, maybe we take that out. Or because I don't wanna have the funeral, I'm having to pull a permit. With it. Um. So I don't, I don't see the need at this time for that particular policy.
I would suggest we review that bylaw, but we'll keep this up. We'll carry this.
Absolutely. That's why we're here. We don't have to agree all the time. So when the motocross comes in for their yearly permit, we don't require us listed on their insurance, do you? Currently?
I believe we do.
Uh, I'm not sure.
I'm thinking of us, I'm thinking of the list that came in from the insurance company, and I think that the.
I think it is. I think it is in the package. I saw one that this past year, I think it was in the prior year. I think so. But we can verify that. Okay, on that one, for now?
Yeah.
All right, community credit card policies. Again, you wanna give us the?
Uh, so we switch banks and they offer credit cards. So this is just a much more convenient way to purchase things um without. The need for reimbursement. So um, you know, just from hotels to tomorrow, the library needs keys made. And I'm gonna, well, if this passes, use the card that I have to go buy them for Lynn because otherwise she would have to. Buy them herself and get reimbursed and uh it's very inconvenient and sometimes unaffordable for some department heads to actually buy things out of their own pocket. But not without a policy. I'm just a policy person. It's just the way I am. When somebody wants to do something, I go, where is it in the book? So.
It's more and more education. You have to sign up for it and they only take credit cards, even the state. I know under all EMS, the medical stuff, this, the drug policies and things like that. The state doesn't take check or electronic transfer. It has to take a credit card. So you have to put it out yourself and get reimbursed. So that's that's crazy.
Doug, your thoughts on that one?
Um, I have no objection. I think I'd sent you a a.
Actually.
A comical note on on one word in there that I hadn't heard that word in a long time, but um. No, I think that's fine. I will tell you that I think many years ago, the company, the company, the town tried this and. It worked fine upright up until it took time too long to reconcile the bill. And pay the bill within the requisite time that it's due so that it doesn't incur any additional interest and or or become a late payment issue. And then eventually the the credit card issuer just cut off the cards because we didn't pay him in time. So. On the backend, make sure we have the processes in place that if. You or Lynn or anyone, for that matter, goes and buys something that they turn in their receipt and we pay the bill.
Put that in there.
Right.
Within five days of receipt of your.
So it just, just how.
Is that what we said?
Sometimes the speed of.
We will be doing ACH payments. We will be streamlining a lot of these financial operations so we don't send out a check and it takes three weeks to get it to the person. Or to the.
Matters. So as far as I, I think it's a good idea and I think, uh, I think the only other comment I had was that if it's. Directly for department heads and the language just need to be tightened up a little bit about there. To the issue, if the if the only people that would have them are department heads or there's gonna be occasions where it may not be a department head that needs it.
Mm-hmm.
More than the department head because of the nature of their job. I again, have no objection. It just needs to be tightened up in there. But the department is responsible for it, period.
Solely responsible, it says.
So that's fine, too. If they designate that, you know, if if the, I'll use the police chief cuz he's sitting here as the the police chief designates. A sergeant or an officer as the guy who uses it the most or needs it the most, but he's still responsible for the charges as the as the department head. Sorry, chief.
I just have to go to approve it so then I can wait when it was adopted, if you so choose.
I think there was on on number eight on page three, that's where, you know, I had given you um. Within five days of receipt of their copy of the bill, it says in a time of fashion.
Okay.
I think that's where that needed to go. I just had one other comment I mentioned to you on the sales tax.
Thank you. I was going there next.
You're welcome. Um, that I've heard that over and over, not just from you. The sales tax um shall not be reimbursed cuz it's public money. However, it has been um. Literally a nightmare to get a. Sales tax exemption certificate, whatever it is, an S T four, whatever it is, from accounting. For justifiable purchases, there's fear that it will be misused, but those are made. Those are made out to the person, the the entity you're going to make that purchase from.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that's a problem, and that should also be turned around timely.
Oh, for sure. Um, do you want me to put?
Something in there that they can get that sales, a legitimate sales tax certificate exemption.
Or they can get reimbursed for the sales tax if they can.
And cuz there's gonna be times where it's emergent. You need to get something, you need to get it now. That's why we have this credit card in the first place.
Right.
You buy something, it's somewhere, you're gonna buy something once forever. It's just not worth the hassle. And to put that back on the employee to have to pay the sales tax, I think isn't reasonable.
They could technically, they could submit that S T four or whatever the health. Forces to the person they purchased it from and get it reimbursed. But it's still a hassle for the employee to have served the town in an emergent situation. It's a burden.
So just say um exemptions apply under that sales tax, you know. It we should be in the practice of making sure that we go to a vendor.
Agreed, but it's gonna happen and.
What happens, we can exempt it. We can approve it. I can approve it.
Or or there's something in here that says uh the.
I'll leave it to the.
Whose determination it was. If it was an improper charge, you can do the same thing there. You can just say. It's discretionary if it was legit, if you could have legitimately avoided it or something. Those kinds of words. Anything there, Russ, from you?
Yeah.
So, okay, very good.
I I make a motion if you're looking for one to approve the policy as as amended, we just talked about. Credit card. Credit card policy, yes.
That was a motion?
Second. Sorry, I was reading.
That's not good. Well, it's cuz we were all here early. Well, how about Diane? Yeah, I've.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Ross Anderson, yes.
Okay, and then the expense reimbursement policy.
Same thing, we just don't have one. Yep, so um, you know.
This is the one with that word in it. It wasn't the other one. Sorry about that. Yeah.
Um, so, you know, just so we understand and everybody understands what we can reimburse, what we will reimburse, what we. Expect when people send in their reimbursements, just to be on the same page. And we will change these F Ys every year. It'll be in a doc, in a Word document. We can just change it to the next F Y. I like to keep it, I like to keep the current year there rather than whatever, you know, this current fiscal year that this. You know, that would never change. I'd like to just have it to where it's.
So on the um expense reimbursement. Um, supply services, equipment must have receipts that are itemized by line. That's fine. No sales tax again. Um. No meals for interdepartmental gatherings or um will be reimbursed. So what about, you know, people's last day and?
Um, so. I took this from another town and I said I was gonna take that out because this town, like we, this Christmas party thing, um. Most towns don't do that, but it's not not allowed and this town is generous in that way. And I mean, to go even further with the E M P V O L. In line item of the budget, I had no idea that it meant employee volunteer recognition. I didn't know what that those three letters were. So my bad. Um, but I can certainly, I'll say, I wanted to take that um.
I know we typically use the big white charge anyways, but you can only get it once a time, one day or once a day typically. Um. The only other thing that I don't know if it needs to be brought out here is our. Accounting is typically looking for original receipts. And sometimes it's just not physically possible to get an original receipt from. Some of the vendors, you know, it's.
Yeah.
It's simply a, you know, a register tape and it doesn't tell you what it is.
Where did you, where is that? Because I gave this to Laura to give me comments and she said original and I said I'm not putting that in there.
Okay, it's not in here. That's why, that's why we need to clarify that they're not needed.
Well, I didn't. Original and I said, I can always expect that. So no, I'm not putting it in there.
Okay.
I'd like. To clarify that electronic submission of Google Maps. And copies of agendas are acceptable. It says a printout and this is. Again, a cost directly incurred by the employees on their own printers in color.
Okay.
Or in black and white. Um.
Are you gonna send the electronic and the printed form? They should, they need everything as a hard copy.
Then let them print it.
Okay.
If they need a hard copy.
Send them a link.
I really didn't, I really don't love this whole Mac Quest thing.
I don't either.
If I can weigh in on that, you.
How much, so many miles.
I. I have to submit these every week for my other role when I travel. And I've gotten in the habit myself of I take a photo of my odometer when I'm leaving my house and I take a photo of my odometer running at home. And my mileage report asks me to write down my mileage, subtract, go across. No one has ever questioned me on the miles. Um, in fact, the only time in the last decade that ever been questioned on miles was by the town of Southwick. I I went around and I picked up two people to bring them to the conference, so I saved two full round trips.
Yeah.
And my mileage report was off by, I think it was point nine miles from Google Maps. And we got into a discussion about it and I go, well, okay, I probably changed lanes three times on the Mask Pike. Maybe that explains it. I don't know, but.
Or why it said take this detour.
Correct. So whatever. Um, I just think if 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 accounting is concerned for audit. And they could go and Google Map something and if it's way off from what somebody reported, you could question it. But if it's, and I'll give you wide dis- wide discretion on what is close. It's close, you go, okay, especially if they, if you write your actual mileage down and, you know, like I said.
And I say this all the time, that people aren't stealing. And if they're stealing, they're gonna lose their job and go to jail and.
We're sending them on their way.
Correct.
So if you'd like, I will be more than happy to remove this and remove it from our expect, from our.
Put the total mileage.
Just mileage.
Correct.
With times seventy cents.
And you know, and usually it's commonsensical, I think, like, you know, if I said I went to. Chicopee to do this for a town function A, I probably wouldn't put that in, but if an employee did put that in. And it came back as two hundred and thirty-eight miles on its face, this is a problem, right?
You can certainly say it will be reviewed.
Correct.
You can, you can.
Just like any other.
Part out, but say the mileage will be reviewed for accuracy. You can say that.
I don't even think we have to say.
Yeah, I mean, you shouldn't have to say it, right?
And I don't, I do not believe that anybody is going to do that, like for seventy extra cents. You know, I I don't think so. This has just been. Past practice, but I'm very happy to get rid of that.
Okay, I'm very happy to this.
Okay.
Okay with that?
Definitely.
Anything else in there?
Um, I don't remember anything else, no.
I got. And and the one word that we agreed on, take out.
Yes.
Sorry. Yes, chambermaid. I I hadn't heard that term in a long time, but it's in this.
Well, you know what a chambermaid is, but it. Well, you don't even know what a chambermaid is, but it was just.
I had, I had to give it, so it's nothing bad. It was just someone, it was
Doesn't sound good.
Characteristic of someone who made up rooms and they don't use that term any longer this last or last century.
Under uh travel.
Housekeeping.
Yes, that's obvious the word.
Under travel transportation, it does say original receipts are required.
Correct, it's gonna change.
I'm just gonna sub original out.
Okay, I thought you already did, alright.
Um, the same sales tax issue is in it. No sales tax will be reimbursed.
Unless extenuating circumstances.
Yeah, if they're going someplace and they know it, get that certificate.
Yes.
So you'll fix that.
Yes.
And meals and hotel tax is included, right?
Yes. Not if you eat itself with them. Actually, the state still takes theirs.
Okay, anything else on that?
I'm good.
Motion to accept it as discussed.
Second.
Well, I'll vote Diane Gali.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Ross Anderson, yes.
Hi, thank you for doing those. And then we have a one-day liquor license application for the Southwick Rec Center. Page twenty-six, if you're going there. At the American Legion, am I on the right thing?
Correct, yeah, correct.
For stomping boots line dancing on eleven twenty-two twenty-five from six PM to eleven PM. Entertainment from seven to nine. Application looked very complete to me.
Not his first rodeo.
Correct. Stomping.
See, thank you.
Gotcha. No stipulations from Lisa or anybody, you know, all looked good to me.
So moved.
Second.
Rock, how about Dan Gali?
Doug Morgan, yes.
Ross Anderson, yes.
And then a parade application for the American Legion for Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, ten forty-five to eleven fifteen. I note that this one is complete with the police deal detail line filled in. And safe to assume this also comes from community policing funds.
Much easier than the last breed.
You can get trampled on a, by a
No. In the in the Veterans Day parade, correct.
You gotta have a lot of trust in those big animals.
Okay.
Uh, okay, anything uh with that one?
So moved.
Second.
Well, I'll vote Diane Gali.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Ross Anderson, yes.
I think that's just for our file. It's just the approval for the file, but she has signed here, sign here.
Do you have any interest in the state grade permit issue we want that for your files?
Thank you.
All back to you, Wicked Tech. All right, next, discuss the transfer station Veterans Day hours. DPW, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I spoke to Rich today, um, and and I I don't know, I guess this is what they always do and and they're really great guys for wanting to stay open and it's a busy day and so they wanna make sure they're open. But, you know, here I come in, the new person, and I'm like, did you bargain this? Did you go to the union? You can't just do this. You can't just say this. You know, you guys are in a union. You have to agree and vote and you can't just come to work on holiday. I mean, there, some people might feel coerced to be here and it's their holiday and, you know, you're in a union. Otherwise, don't have a union. It's always a choice. Anyway, they were like, what? We wanna, we want to. This is not, you know, it's not um it's not a problem. The guys don't have a problem with it. So I said, just get a letter from the union and I'll, and we'll talk about it tonight with the board. Um, because they're already off on Monday, so uh they would also be off on Tuesday and then they, and then the the transfer station will be closed and that's how it should be unless they want to come to work.
Their holidays, Monday.
So then they get holiday.
They'll get holiday pay on Tuesday.
Double time.
Time and a half.
Time and a half, okay.
But they begin, they begin to stay home, so we're getting regular time to stay home.
Yes. So they wanna just stay open.
We would just have to do an MOA.
Well, whatever it's
Tuesday holidays in the past.
I think they, this is what they do and typically the Mondays.
I'm sure Veterans Day, you've been on a Tuesday because it'd be every day, you know. It's eleven eleven every year.
Whatever eleven is, that's the holiday.
That's right. It's eleven eleven every year, but it's been a Tuesday before.
But Monday holidays. Since they're off, they should technically be off on Tuesdays, but they don't. They just get, they just work it and get the time and half or whatever. So that's what I was told today.
But if they're in their um, are they, they're in their contract, right, for a year or two, they're coming due?
Next year.
So if they've already done it within the contract, it's past practice, so you could accept it.
Well, I don't know that we have.
I don't, I I don't.
I mean, I agree, we should have an MOU or something.
Somebody can come back at us and grieve it and potentially get triple damages. I mean, it's just not, you have a union for a reason. So if they wanna all agree that they should work, that that's great. Let's just have a little letter and and be done with it. So anyway, I think if you guys are
Is it credible that the transfer station is open on Tuesday?
It's the late night. But because I originally said
Thursday also.
I originally said, uh you know, you're just gonna have to be closed if you, if you uh, if you didn't run it by your union. And then Rich called me back and he's like, the guy said it's okay. And I was like, okay, we have to make sure with the union. You pay duties, just make sure, get a letter. So.
Uh, what do you think?
I pardon if you get a letter.
I I I agree and, you know, kudos to the guys. They do a great job up there and I appreciate their dedication. Yeah, and and they're being aware of the the public here too, that people may still wanna come to the dump on a Tuesday afternoon after coming to the parade and celebrating Veterans Day, that they may want to still visit the transfer station. So I think we just put an MOA together and and do it and and I would make a a motion because of the timing of this to allow the chair to execute that, because we're not meeting, you know, we are gonna meet next week. But that'll be tight for them to change the scheduling of the transfer station hours between now and then. So I'd make a motion for the, to enter into a, an MOA for this year for eleven eleven for the transfer station um and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Well, I'll vote to engage.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Ross Anderson, yes.
Okay, acknowledge and approve two hundred seventy-five dollar donation from HHD, IBS and Chabelli's Mobile to be deposited into the Southwick Animal Control Medical Gift Fund and the Southwick Animal Control Gift Fund.
Those are jars, you see.
I believe so. Uh, not from Hayden, but for IBS and Chabelli's, yes, I believe so.
So moved with our thanks.
Roll call about Diane Gali.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Ross Anderson, yes.
Acknowledge and approve justice assistance grant, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollar award to the Southwick Police Department.
So moved.
So.
Well, I'll vote Diane Gali.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Ross Anderson, yes. What's it for? Staffing?
Okay, other new business. Um, as we've been talking about, EverSource Community Information Meeting, um Smart Meters is tomorrow at six PM in the auditorium. We are also Channel Fifteen with that is Zoom also so people can ask. I think there was a but we probably should try to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll follow the ma- all the methods.
Okay.
Sorry, her pigeon.
Yes, that too.
Send, send out questions to your speak on your behalf. Um, also, November thirteenth at one thirty PM, which is what? Um, here in the land use room and on Zoom, there's a presentation by Mast DEP. Part of the watershed planning program hosted by RTC Environmental is one of the partners, I think, working on the dredging, TRC rather, on the dredging project for the lakes here. And this is to gain an understanding of the challenges and to get input from the community. Not sure what exactly input they're looking for from the community or community stakeholders, what they think is important, I guess. Um, we shall see, November thirteenth at one thirty. That's it for me for other new, I think.
Not under new business tonight.
Okay, old business, master plans commitments. Um, I still, I didn't get anything from you yet to integrate in there. Did you get a chance to look at what I did so far? Is it?
Yeah, sort of, yeah.
Is it? What you understand, the way I wrote those, call them rejections or?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Um, so if, I don't know, if you've got others or other suggestions, we can, again, we can parse some of the things that are in each of those recommendations, keep a piece, purge a piece in any of that. So I'll wait for yours and integrate them into this as well. We'll circulate it one more time.
Okay.
That's all I think I have for old business right now.
Uh, the only other thing I have is a beta, someone from beta did contact me that they're finishing up the road survey. Um, they had reached out looking for major projects that have been completed on the roads in the last couple of years to put into the um equation on the spreadsheets. So I did forward that to John and Rich um this afternoon, so that's in the works.
Good. Moving on, right.
Looks like they were getting ready to pay Bloomus to finally.
Yeah, they did Hillside and I think they just rolled right over.
Yeah. See what you did there.
Doug, you got anything else there?
Nellie Major wanna congratulate the Civic Fund, um was a very well attended, very well-run parade for the sixth, seventh or so annual farm parade. Good to see the agcom participating as well. They had a ginormous float. Almost as big as those oxen. Those guys were big. Um, but kudos to everyone that helped out, the uh Police and Fire Associations um that were present and the police details that made everything run uh so smoothly.
Popcorn.
Popcorn and hot dogs. How can you go wrong, right? But uh no, it was a great event. It was good to see and there was hundreds, hundreds of people lining the streets from uh Summer House south down to Town Hall. So it was, and it was a beautiful day.
It's all running for candy the day after Halloween, right? They didn't get enough.
Yeah. Amazing.
Never enough.
Nope. Um, but that was great and I I know that there's um, I wanna thank uh Nicole and everyone who helped organize that. This upcoming thing from EverSource on the Smart Meters, there's still a lot of discussion. Hopefully, this will be air clearing a little bit tomorrow, so people get a better understanding of whatever sources thought processes and what they're doing. Um, you know, I was a little bit harsh last week talking about it, because I think it was the it was a bad look for EverSource to start installing these meters without having the thing that we asked to have and to schedule it slightly after they were supposed to start. So I appreciate their response that they were gonna hold off at least until we've had this meeting. Um, and the only other thing I wanna add to that, because it'll be a good discussion tomorrow, but um, there was discussion from there's been a lot of discussion about if you opt out that they're going to, they're no longer gonna charge you extra or they're gonna charge you less extra than they were before. Um, to me, that was interesting in the sense that if we're gonna make this so much easier for them to read your meter, because now they can do it wirelessly and they don't have to drive around. Shouldn't you be getting a thirty-four dollar a month discount on your electricity, not pay a penalty to keep your old meter, to keep reading it the way they've been reading it for the past, I don't know, at least thirty years? They don't get out of their car anymore and come up and read your meter anymore. They do it all wirelessly, but lo- very locally. I found it interesting that that's a kind of a false narrative in in my opinion. They really should be. If you opt out, um, they should keep your bill the same. If you take the smart meter, you should enjoy a discount because you're lowering their cost of having to read their meter. Um, I guess we're sub, you know, to subsidize the cost of the meter or what have you, but that's all I have for that. And I look, I I will be in attendance tomorrow as well to learn more about these smart meters and what they're going to do with them and what they're gonna do with the data that they collect. That's it for me. Nothing.
Okay. We will acknowledge, oh, we will not be acknowledging and approving the open session minutes from October twenty-second and twenty-ninth because we didn't meet on those days. Those are the wrong dates on the agenda.
We can approve those minutes easy then.
So she'll just correct those and we'll pick those up next week. And we are going to acknowledge payables warrant number two six one one being dated October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five in the amount of one hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-six cents. And did we have executive? Okay, then motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I don't know that I could second a motion at six forty-six on select for the evening night. But I will.
And we had discussion.
And knows, and knows that, right?
No.
Wow, second.
Roll call about Diane Gali.
Doug Morgan, absolutely.
Thank you, everybody.